Can reconvene our meeting to open session. The Board has been in executive session since six o'clock to discuss three tenure candidate matters, a litigation matter and a contractual matter. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could have introductions?
Dave Hurst.
Wendy Sampson.
Jonathan Fishbein.
Catherine Nato.
Jody Monroe.
Holly Dellenbach.
Christine Beck.
Meredith Mariotti.
Will O'Beir.
Judy Kehoe.
First up on the agenda is the approval of minutes. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the October 6th, 2021, regular Board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Next up are our meeting reports, and first is our Superintendent's report.
Sure, thank you. We had a homecoming last weekend. We had a pep rally and we had the release of part of our new logo from the Athletic Department. So Brittany, can you pull that up? Thank you. It signed me out a while ago, too, so.
Just adding to the excitement of the unveiling.
Yes, this is a suspense.
Building anticipation.
Yes. Okay, there we go. So we released the new Athletics logo, which I'll show in just a second at the homecoming at the pep rally this weekend. We are expected to release the new District logo in December as part of our website redesign, where we'll have some standardized icons and banners across some of our social media platforms. The new District website, we are expecting will be ready in January, and we'll have some newly designed print publications. I know some people have asked, are you taking all the old Eagles down? We're not planning to do that. We're just planning a refresh now with some new logos that we can use moving forward. So there is no plan to. Someone asked me about the Eagle up on the high school. We're not planning to take that down. So we will have a mix of those. So can you go to the next slide? So this was what was on the football field that was shared, and these are the logos that will be available for some of our uniforms and some of our athletic attire, and the boosters will likely use that as well. So I've seen a few of them already on social media. So I'd like to thank Bosie's Communications staff, and we did have small groups of, I know some Board members participated in that, to do the, you know, look at the very small details of the Eagle eye and the colors and what they symbolize. And through that, everyone kind of was quiet about it, which is what we wanted to do the launch. But there were a number of people who provided feedback, and I think that the Communications Department at Bosie's did a really good job of reflecting what the feedback that staff and community members had to say. So that's one of my reports. I'd also like to thank the community for coming out to vote for the Capitol Project. We had a very good turnout. The approval of this bond will allow us to continue to keep our facilities current and make improvements for our students, staff and community. I'd also like to thank the District Wellness Committee for actively working to offer wellness activities for our students and staff. One of the first events that the group sponsored was to support breast cancer, and I'd like to specifically thank Jen Murphy, our PE, FACS and Health Supervisor, for helping to organize the Bethlehem team in participating in the Making Strides Against Breast Cancer Walk, which took place this past weekend in Washington Park. I'd also like to congratulate our girls tennis team, who won the sectionals and have advanced to regionals, and they were playing this afternoon. Is that correct? Did we know how they did?
We don't know how they did.
Haven't heard. We have not heard, so more on that. And I know many of our other teams are beginning to participate in sectionals, so I'm sure we'll have more announcements. And finally, I'd like to thank our Board of Education. This is School Board Recognition Week, and so we have a brief presentation to thank you. I know the hours that all of you put in, particularly during COVID, has not been easy, so I really appreciate the support and thank you for your service to the District. So, thank you. That's my report.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Jody?
Next up is our Board Report. I'd also like to thank the community for coming out in support of the bond and for exercising their right to vote. I wanted to recognize the Middle School Garden Club. I happened to be at the farmer's market this past Saturday and stopped by their table there. If anybody has a chance to do that, if they're probably given the amount of produce that they seem to be generating in that garden, I would think that they would be there again. But it's amazing how much of a harvest they have had. So I definitely commend them on that, both the students and their advisors. And I wanted to make a note that the NISBA virtual morning meeting that they're putting together in place of the conference, that the in-person conference that was canceled is this coming Monday. I think you can still sign up ahead of time if you would like to participate. I think it's from eight to 12 or thereabouts on Monday morning. What else? And Wendy was going to share a brief report out on the annual business meeting that took place on Monday.
Yes, I got to be the voting delegate for Bethlehem at that New York State School Boards Association Business Meeting. And the usual resolutions for advocacy for the School Boards Association positions were, you know, voted on. And so some of the resolutions that were adopted for this year involved proposals that would allow students with disabilities to be tested at their developmental age, which is a wonderful thing to be advocating for, but State Ed also does do that every year, and the U.S. Department of Education usually denies that waiver, but we're still want to be advocating for that anyway. Also, another position is that we're going to, the School Boards Association will support proposals that would increase state and federal reimbursement for school meals and nutritious snacks for all students. That's something every school could use. They're going to advocate for some certain changes in open meetings laws, which I don't know if they'll go through or not, but they would like to make it easier for people on school boards to, you know, attend via video conference, which is always a good thing in case, you know, you have to be away. And just some other very basic general things to, you know, use data efficiently to work for changes in the foundation aid that benefit all students and that provide greater equity in programs for all students, child safety zones, and so kids don't have to walk so much because of all the busing problems that are going on. They want to advocate that local school districts have more control over that, and that's always a good thing, as we're concerned about that ourselves here in Bethlehem. And, you know, maybe one of the last ones that was interesting, I thought, was that they want to support getting rid of school level expenditure reporting, which is very cumbersome on our business office people and the districts in general. So, you know, a lot of good legislative agenda items came up, and so now we know where the School Boards Association for the State is heading this year.
Great. Thanks, Wendy.
You're welcome.
And thank you for serving in that capacity for us this year.
Oh, there was one more that was really interesting, too. Policy changes to streamline the teacher certification process for teachers who are coming from out of state and those who have previous teaching experiences. Having been a teacher, the reciprocity process is hard sometimes to get out-of-state teachers hired in New York State. So anything that can make that easier, because we need teachers in our state.
Thank you. And then the last thing that I have is that we did meet, the Policy Committee met on Monday, and just briefly, we discussed a number of recommended updates recommended by NISBA to several different policies, including the Code of Conduct and the smoking policy as it pertains to the District. So you could look to see those likely on our next agenda. Christine?
So I was just going to add that I went to homecoming on Saturday, or it was Saturday? Friday. It was Friday. And it was nice to see all the kids in the stands. I mean, they were, it was packed. It was a full house. And while we weren't successful, I don't believe we were successful in a win that evening, it was nice to see so many people out and socializing and eating at the food stand and everything, so it was nice. And then Jody had mentioned the girls. They had won the Section Two championship against Burt Hills Saturday at Central Park. And then I believe they're going to regionals on Sat, this coming Saturday in Utica, I believe. I don't know who they played today, but that's what I heard on Monday. So congratulations to them.
That's great. Anybody have anything else they would like to share?
I also went to saw the farmer's market stand, and what I found fascinating and wonderful is something I've seen before. It's not just Mark teaching the kids about the art of growing food and composting and everything that goes with it, but he was also teaching them how to make change, how to run the business of a stand. And to see him that interactive was just wonderful, and the kids were just also wonderful. I mean, dealing with them as a customer and, you know, interacting with them, I was very impressed with their composure and especially with the way Mark engaged them and made everything a teaching moment.
Yeah, I would agree. He was helping them be really good salespeople. I think I walked away with a butternut squash I did not originally intend to buy. Anybody have anything else? Great. Next is the Student Senate Report. Do we have anyone from the Student Senate with us tonight?
Oh, yay.
Hi, it's so exciting. We haven't had somebody from the Student Senate in so long.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Baldwin, the Secretary of the Student Senate. Sophia Sokar, President, regrettably couldn't be here tonight, but our update is the past two weeks, we've been working hard to plan a fun and exciting pep rally while also following the COVID guidelines we were given. That happened last Friday on the 15th and went quite smoothly, although it looked different from past years. It was nice to have the community together again. Projects we're continuing to work on or are organizing, a Veterans Memorial and a courtyard outside the guidance offices for students to work or distress. Mr. Irons, our supervisor, and Mr. Domell have a meeting with the District Architects in two weeks to get more details on both of those, and that's all. Thank you, unless there's questions.
Thank you very much. Next up on our agenda are our presentations this evening, and the first one is the 2021 Board Recognition.
So Mrs. Painter is here to show us some spectacular artwork.
Yeah. So what we did in, as Jody mentioned, it is Board of Education Recognition Week, so what we did was we put together a small gift for you. And this is all artwork that you might write some notes to somebody, send out a personal note to someone. These are note cards from students last year. These are from our Capstone Art Classes, is from AP Studio in Art and our Senior Portfolio Class. So what you'll find in these note cards are images of artwork that really reflect the students' ideas and contemporary issues that students are going through today. So some of the ones that you're going to find, this is Ellie Cromling. Ellie's at SUNY Newport studying illustration right now. And Gabe Diamond is at Hudson Valley Community College studying graphic design as well. This is Selena Welling. It's hard to read from this far away. Selena is studying at Acuna School in New York City. She's also studying photography, and she's also studying some biochemistry. And this is Maya Lamov. Maya is taking a gap year before she heads off to Hamilton College. She's studying in Rome right now. And Alora Rabinstein, she's actually at a think tank program, so she's in an alternative direction, but she's doing graphic design at this think tank program that she applied for. And Shana Olbryes is at Olbryes College, and she's studying art history and creative writing. And I also put in a few more slides on there, but these are not ones that are in your note cards. We actually had several students this past year that have gone on to study art in all different forms. So Ian Morgan's at Syracuse University studying fashion. Megan's at RIT studying graphic design. Maddie Kaplan is at SUNY Buffalo. And this is Olivia Burner, and Olivia's at Sage College. Actually, I know most of these kids, which is great, because I can tell you exactly where they've been, but so each one of these, there's a couple more on here. This is Danielle Wontrop, and she's at FIT, at Parsons, studying fashion. Aiden Raffey is one of our special education students who's studying graphic design, and many of the students that you're going to see here, these are all students that have graduated by through our Capstone Programs. This is Zosia Kessel. Zosia is at Brown University. Taylor Davis. We don't want to touch one of them, right? So all these students create these for us to tell us a little bit about where they're headed this year. So what's nice about your note cards is they really reflect what the students are thinking So thank you very much for your service to our school, and we just wanted to make these for you as a small gift of our appreciation in the District.
Well, thank you so much. I know I use them every year.
Oh, good.
They're just so creative. They're great. They're amazing. I wish I was that talented.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So and also part of School Board Recognition Week is Board members contribute different books to our school library, so I don't know how you want to go, if you want to go around and show what books you're donating?
Yeah, I'll start. I'll start, and then I was excited by Maya, by my list of books this year. You know, you don't, you're not always familiar with all of the books on the list, but there are a few I was like, that I was particularly excited about, and including A Spider's Life, because I like the picture on the front. But I was excited that, and my books are going to Slingerlands Elementary Library to be donating a copy of Stamped for Kids. I actually read this with my own kids, so I was excited that that was one of them. And Unplugged by Gordon Corman, which I got rave reviews from my 10-year-old, so I was excited to be having that one in the pile. And then Hijack, which I just think looks really cute. It reminds me of kind of Mo Willems Elephant and Piggy style of a book, so I like that one a lot. So Christine, you want to go next?
Sure. So I am donating books to the middle school, or they were donated on my behalf, and they're all books on diversity, which the titles and the content is amazing. The first book is Empowered Black Girl, which is about the mental, social and physical health of a young African-American woman, and talking about confidence and beauty work, resilience. It's a good topic. We have Threads of Peace, which is interesting. It's about the connection between Mahatma Gandhi and Martin Luther King, so it was an interesting tie-in, not their own autobiography, but just how they were connected. The Awakening of Malcolm X and How He Became Who He Was From a Young Age. And then the book called The Only Black Girls in Town, talking about a girl who is the only black girl in her community, and then meeting somebody from a different culture and how they were different and forged a friendship. Uncomfortable Conversations with a Black Boy. And this one I definitely, I'm putting on my reading list, The Black Friend, on being a better white person, and it's from the perspective of a black person and how white privilege has influenced certain types of biases. So I think this is a good addition as well to the middle school, so thank you.
Meredith?
This year, my books are going to the high school, and they're all nonfiction books, so I was really interested to see all these books. The first one is called On the Outside Looking Indian. It's about an Indian-American woman who had a fairly strict upbringing, and in her 30s, she decided to have a typical American teenagehood and her adventures with that and how she came to terms with her upbringing. I have Finding Latinx: A Search for the Voices Redefining Latino Identity. It talks about different communities in America, including an industrial town in upstate New York, so it sounds like there may be some interesting reading there. I have A Different Mirror for Young People: A History of Multicultural America. This looks really interesting, talking about a different viewpoint of American history. I have House of Sticks, another memoir by Lai Tran. It's a story of a woman who came to America from Vietnam as a toddler and how she adjusted and her family adjusted to living in America. The Making of Asian America, another story, another, excuse me, history, talking about how there's new immigrants coming to America, but also the deep roots of Asian Americans in our country. And then finally, I have The Sum of Us: What Racism Costs Everyone and How We Can Prosper Together, talking about how racism is not an issue for just black people, how it is painful for our entire country and all of us, and how it affects not only the dysfunction of our democracy, but also it's a moral crisis for all of us. So it looks like a really powerful book that I wrote all these down, and I'm looking forward to reading as well.
Hello?
Mine are going to Eagle Elementary School this year. I was excited to have a K-5 group because I was able to read most of them ahead of time, which I haven't been able to do in the past. The first one is See the Cat: Three Stories About a Dog, and it's sort of a take on like the C-Spot Run old primers that we learned to read from, except it's really pretty funny. Two early reader picture books, Ties, Travels and The Bear in the Family. This one made me cry over the weekend. It's called I Talk Like a River, and it's sort of autobiographical story about a young boy with a pretty significant stutter and how his father helps him find his voice. We Are the Water Protectors, which is inspired by stories of Indigenous peoples' journeys through North America, and really, at its root is really a book about how important our water systems are and why those are important to protect. And Paper Sun, which is the story of Tyrus Wong, who was a young Chinese-American who immigrated here at a young age, and it's a story of his journey and how he became a very successful Hollywood artist in America.
Catherine?
Well, first of all, I just wanted to share that I am delighted that anybody would donate books on my behalf anywhere. You know, books and libraries have been such a big part of my life. I found so much solace and joy and refuge and everything, so just thank you. This is exciting for me. So I've got some great books that are going to Elsmere Elementary. First one, R-E-S-P-E-C-T, My Friends Respect, by, about Aretha Franklin. And I've been singing this song now, all week, thank you. So that one's heading over there. Twenty One Steps, story about the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier and the soldiers that stand guard day and night around the clock. We Move the World, a really empowering picture book that just talks about how small actions add up and what we all can do to make a difference in our world. We Are Still Here: Native American Truths Everyone Should Know. And I was super excited because right on the front cover, we've got the Haudenosaunee flag as well. We're on Haudenosaunee land here, right at the border of the Mohawk people and the Mohican people. So that's powerful, I think, to have in our schools as well, just reminding us that we are, that not we, excuse me, that we still have, we have rich Native history and we still have Native people with us every day, working. And so that's exciting. And then Flip: How the Frisbee Took Flight. Yeah, there you go. Somebody invented that. And then finally, Dolly Madison, The White House and the Big Tornado. So thank you, everybody who put these together. This is delightful.
Jonathan?
My books are going to Hammagill this year, and I'm very delighted because it's the first time that my books are going to Hammagill, and that's where my kids grew up, and it was a delightful experience for them. And I'm also delighted that the new principal is being received so well and, you know, is such a positive influence there, following in Dave Kay's big shoes. The first book I have is If I Were a Tree, and it's about two siblings imagining what it would like to, like, what it would be like to be a tree, a long day. My favorite, one of my favorite books, I haven't read this one, but I, as growing up, Mars was my favorite planet, and this is a rather silly story, but it's full of great facts about Mars and why Mars and Earth are such good friends. Baloney and Friends is really for the younger folk, four to eight, and it's basically three stories in one, and at the end, you can learn to draw all the characters with step-by-step instructions, which is something I need when I'm drawing characters. Brazil is a fact book exploring the history, geography and culture, society of Brazil, which is a very interesting country. One book that really caught my eye was The Elephant in the Room. It's, it's, it's basically an immigration story, and it's also It's, it's, it's basically an immigration story, and it's also, what's interesting, it's interwoven with a little girl who, The Elephant in the Room really is an elephant, and you'll have to read it and find out if it fits in the room. Eyes That Kiss in the Corners is about a young Oriental girl who notices that her eyes are different than her peers. And through her mother and other powerful women in her life, she learns to really appreciate that her eyes are different, that they are beautiful, and it brings her a great sense of beauty in and of herself and self-empowerment, and it's a wonderful book. I hope every girl in the school gets to read it.
Wendy?
All right. My selections are going to Glenmont this year, which is wonderful. We have a lot of grades four through six kind of aimed stories. We have The Blackbird Girls, which takes place in the Ukraine in 1986 around the Chernobyl disaster, and the unlikely friendship that results between a Jewish girl and a Ukrainian girl, who are neighbors, and both of their fathers work in the, in the nuclear power plant. The Only Black Girls in Town, which is, I think, also coming from Christine. One African-American girl gets a new neighbor who's also African-American, and all sorts of mayhem and madness ensues because they're very, very different girls. I also have The Eyes That Kiss in the Corners, like Jonathan. Again, story of Asian, an Asian girl who learns to appreciate her differences. This would be my favorite, the story of Kamala Harris, and that's a nonfiction book, and a good role model of our first female vice president. And the last one is Fred's Big Feelings, kind of based on Mr. Rogers, which is a character that we all, hopefully, we all know and love. Many of us in our generation do. We want to keep that, keep that sentimental high, of being kind to everybody.
Thank you so much from all of us. I know I love being able to have the books donated every year. It's great.
That's one of my favorite things that we get to do as board members.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service. I don't think, you know, the general community knows how much time board members invest in the school district, so I really appreciate you, and I know the staff support and appreciate all the work that you do.
Next up is our strategic plan update. Yeah?
Okay. We good? Thank you. So I want to begin with the strategic plan update, but before I begin the presentation, I do want to recognize Charmaine Wijasinger, who is out in the audience. She was part of the strategic plan development, and I did invite other members to come and hear some of the updates, and she was the only taker, so I appreciate Charmaine coming. Okay, so next slide. So the original strategic plan was developed and introduced in 2018-19. Part of that plan included a new mission statement and a reset, an update of our core values. And at that time, we identified 72 performance indicators, because one of the conversations we had and feedback we had from the community, as well as the group, was that in order to really make the strategic plan meaningful, we should have some metrics that we should measure along the way. So we've had a little bit of an impact by COVID, as you all know. We started out in our first-year progress, in some of which we were able to set benchmarks right from the onset, and some we still needed to develop those metrics as a baseline. So in 2019, that was the first year, the targets, we hit about 43% of the metrics. And at the time, when we set the metrics, some of them, we didn't really know if they were accurate metrics, accurate targets, I guess I should say, because we had never done this before. We revised some of the metrics in 2019-20 based on some of the initial, initial data. And so 10 of those 72 original metrics were revised, removed, or combined based on some of that preliminary data. And then COVID hit, and unfortunately, we were not able to measure many of our metrics. So 61% of our year-two metrics could not be measured, and 92% of the original metrics were impacted in some way. So what we did is we decided that we really didn't need to do anything with the mission and the core values. We went through those. We felt that they still were part of what we all stood for. But we did decide over the summer to make revisions to the metrics, which is the area that we knew we needed to address. So in our new measures, we have 52 of them, and we still have the five-year plan to measure those out through 2025-26. So our mission is to educate and prepare all students to reach their potential, discover their purpose, and be engaged community members. Our core values that still hold true are in the areas of academic, character, community, and wellness. And since we implemented the strategic plan, all of our action plans or our goals each year are focused on these four core areas. So I want to talk a little bit about some of the changes in each of those, these areas. So in academics, one of the things we removed from this area is we removed the New York State testing. And the reason we removed the New York State testing was because we've not had consistent testing since COVID, but even prior to that, we had some opt-outs, the tests changed. And so we have the iReady diagnostic in reading and math for K through eight now. Those are national norms. Kids are taking those three times a year, and we believe that those measures are more reflective of our instructional program and more reflective of the data that we can gain from them. For example, in the New York State testing, we didn't have any good data for the K through two population because we didn't have assessments in those areas. This provides us with information on phonics, instruction, fluency, all those skills that students need to become good readers. And these go all the way through eighth grade. So you can see our baseline we have, and our targets in 2026 are where we would like to be, or surpassed by that year. So that is the big change in the academic area. We still kept the state assessments for the Regents exam, and we have the mastery. Those of you who were part of the board during the strategic plan development or the committee, we recognize that mastery is really what our goal should be, not just passing rates. So on the Regents exams, discuss data points, you'll see all of them are mastery rates. Okay. Next slide? And there's no changes. Oh, can you go back, Brittany? There is one small, next one. The one other change we made, because we've added more university in the high school courses, we originally had just the percentage of high school seniors who were enrolled in at least one AP course, and we added the UHS courses to combine because they do offer college credit. And some of those actually afford students more opportunity for college credit than sometimes the AP courses do. So we did add that as a metric as well. In character, we talked quite a bit about this, and because of COVID and the instructional model we have, we believe we really need a reset on some of the DASSA and VADER assessment data that we have, going back really two years. We don't believe will be very reflective of where we are now. So we're going to use this year to collect that baseline data. And to clarify, these are more serious violations that are report, we need to report under the school climate information. So we'll collect that data this year and set our baseline. The percentage of students who regularly participate, we do think that's important, particularly now with getting students re-engaged in school. And that baseline data does come from the school climate survey, which we did not do last year. We did a shorter version, if you remember the school climate survey. We just did a 15-question survey to get a check on how students were doing. But we do plan to do the climate survey again this year, and that is self-reporting by students, so that'll be helpful to have that information. So that data is from 2020, just before we shut down for COVID. So it's only a little over a year before, but we think it'll be accurate. And then the percentage of students who are registered to vote, we still want, again, that's self-reporting, but we think it's important to try and monitor that.
Jody, could you just spell out DASSA and VADER for folks?
Dignity for All Students Act. Invader is Violence and Disruptive Incident Reports. Yep. For the community, we really didn't make any changes. This is how does the community support our programs in our schools through our budget vote? What's our community service hours, which, again, this baseline data was prior to COVID, so we'll see this year if we have similar measures. We are using Passport for Good to keep track of those hours, so hopefully, we'll have good data moving forward. And in the wellness area, as I mentioned, we didn't do the school climate survey, but we do plan to do it this year. So any of those baseline metrics, and you can see, these are the actual questions that they refer to, are from 2019-20. So we believe many of these, particularly this year, are very important. We've done the school climate survey typically right after the holidays. We might try and bump that up this year to get some of these measures a little bit earlier. But we won't want to do it very too much because we want the data to be consistent from year to year as to when we're collecting that information. The other area in wellness I wanted to note, you can go to the next slide, Brittany, is the attendance data. So during the shutdown, we didn't have great attendance data because many students who were out were participating virtually at home. So we went through some of our past data to look at some of the chronic absenteeism or the at-risk. And the chronic absenteeism rates are really the area we want to focus on, particularly with our students. We see larger numbers of absenteeism from our special education students, to some degree, our English-language learners, although that's, I want to note, that's a much smaller student population, so their percentages tend to get skewed easier, and our economically disadvantaged students are the groups that we see much higher absenteeism rates. And prior to COVID, we were putting in interventions. We have attendance committees at all of the buildings to review absenteeism. We have more principals' meetings or counselor meetings with the parents to try and stress the importance of attendance, and we do think that this is an area we'll really need to focus on during the next year or two. And the next piece of information, this kind of goes along with the DASSA and the VADER reporting, is the suspension rates. This data is a combination from 2019-20 and the year prior, 2018-19. And the reason we use those numbers is because we were shut down beginning in March of '20, so we didn't have a full year. So this does reflect the average of the two years prior for in-school and out-of-school suspensions for the middle and high school. Historically, we have seen larger suspension rates, again, for our special education students and for our economically disadvantaged students. So we are having, looking at that baseline and then looking at a new baseline for those subgroups this year. We do have prior data, but we felt like getting the baseline this year would be important for those subgroups. So moving on to our annual goals based on some of that data, we are going to continue with our five-year program reviews. We are doing more work with iReady and looking at that data because that is our measure for the metrics. We'll be using that to look at our instructional practices, our intervention services for students. And then we will continue to prioritize our curriculum. Last year, we talked about taking the curriculum and trying to streamline it, to narrow that down because we had limited time. The teachers felt that that was very helpful. They felt like it was, they were able to target instruction more for students, so we're continuing to do that and looking at the New York State standards and what makes sense to maintain and what things we may need to adjust. So we'll continue to do that. Also, we are going to continue to develop rigorous common assessments. There are new changes with the K through five science standards. The New York State assessment in science is moving to grade five.
Next year, Dave? Or two years?
Two years. So this year, grade four, next year, just grade eight, and then the following year, grade five.
So they're revamping that. In our K-5 science cabinet, they'll be looking at those changes in aligning the curriculum to those next-generation science standards. We talked last year about developing a K-12 wellness curriculum that includes the social-emotional learning, some of the aspects of the DARE program, some of the diversity work that we've been doing. So that will be something you'll hear about more later in the school year. But you can see how it combines help, facts, some of the library curriculum that we've developed, and general mental health curriculum. Also, the New York State Computer Science and Digital Fluency Standards. We're continuing to work in those areas, engaging in technology in the K-12 program. And another area you'll hear more about later in the year is the K-5 multi-tiered system of supports. Prior, this, we refer to it as RTI. This is a multi-tiered system of student services, and this is to look at the whole child in regards to not only their academic needs, but also their social and emotional needs. And so this is being implemented K-5 through our data team process, and also we'll move up into the middle school, though it works a little differently at the middle school just because of the size and the structure. In character, some of our goals, we're focusing on equity and cultural responsiveness, which we have been doing and will continue to be ongoing during the course of the year. We've done some training, and we'll continue to do training in sexual harassment and professional development for our staff. And then also, we believe this is really important, the character, aside from character, it also ties into relationships, social-emotional areas, to continue to create or create new opportunities for students to strengthen their relationships, both with their peers as well as adults in all of our buildings. With the community, we already did, as we have been, looking at ways to reach out to families. There's a letter that goes from the district, letting families know that we can offer assistance if they need that. That already went out. We also are continuing our backpack program. We continue our holiday drive, but more importantly, we've had many community members reach out to us and say, how can we help? And so we do have a system through special education where people can donate gift cards or other items to families who may have needs during the course of the year. And then also highlighting and celebrating district accomplishments. It seems that it's been a while since we've had a lot of these opportunities, so this year, we really want to take advantage and try to highlight some of our new facilities, some of our programs. some of our programs that we offer. So, we're looking to do that through social media, some video, and also our communications. And finally, wellness. A big area that we're focusing on is student mental health and social emotional learning. You'll, again, hear more about that with the MTSS program. We talked about this quite a bit in the last few years, about what our counselors are doing, what our coordinated care teams are doing at the elementary levels, our mental health committees are doing at the secondary levels. So, this is an area that we are putting a lot of emphasis on, not only for our students, but also with our staff. And it has been hard for staff to deal with some of the struggles. So, what things can we do? Things such as the wellness committee and offering an opportunity for stu, for staff to come together and be part of a walk that I mentioned earlier is one of those areas we're looking at. Tiered system of supports to monitor student attendance. I mentioned this when I was going through the metrics, looking at the attendance at all the buildings. We have attendance committees to try and engage parents when we're concerned about students who are absent regularly. And finally, reinvigorating our green initiatives. During COVID, there were a lot of things we could not do. So, we're trying to restore some of those opportunities that involve students and staff in our good-for-school community. And that is a quick summary of our goals, as well as our revisions to our metrics. So, any questions people have, I'll be happy to answer.
With the academic metrics, what are we using for our baseline? Where is that data coming from?
So, the iReady data is from, not last?
Yeah, we took actually three years' worth of iReady data.
Right, it's an average.
And averaged it prior to the students being able to take them home because of COVID.
Right.
Okay.
Because we didn't feel that was an accurate measure.
That's why I was wanting to make sure it wasn't just off of last year.
Yeah. No, no, no.
Okay.
Yeah, definitely.
Is most of the data that you're using, the original baseline average, we skip COVID, and then we continue? Is that the idea of what you're doing?
Right, most of it. In the areas that we indicated we would re-establish the baseline data is because we felt going back prior to COVID with all that's happened maybe really wouldn't be accurate data. And then, some of that discipline data was a combined of 2018, 19, and 1920 because we had most of the year, but we didn't have all of the year. Yes.
When you were talking about New York State's president, the non-teen included, you were talking, does that mean regents or that's separate?
Just the three through eight. The regents exams, we are still including in the metrics.
And that's because we're required to, or?
Um, no, because we feel that the regents exam, particularly looking at mastery, is a good reflection of our instructional program. We look at that. We revise our curriculum based on some of the changes. And those regents exams, aside from the fact that they have changed recently, overall, they've been fairly consistent, where the three-through-eight assessments have just changed so much over the last several years that we, that's why we removed the three-eight for now.
When you say they're consistent, in the past, they, you know, every, when the results would come out, you know, you would wonder, okay, where did they move the passing grade?
Well.
So, how consistent are they if they're, are they still moving that passing grade to get so many students over the hump in passing them? Or, has that settled down?
That's settled down, and I think you're talking about the scaling.
Yes.
And so, the scaling, one of the complaints at times has been that the bar to pass them has been lower. And it's been challenging to get the higher grades. The mastery, I think, to get an eight, mastery considered 85 or above is a more rigorous data point. And we think that that is acceptable for us to strive for, and that has been relatively consistent. And I think those scales have improved with some of the new assessments. I see Dave shaking his head. I don't know if you want to add something more about?
Yeah, they haven't really changed substantially in probably 10 years or so.
Right.
The one thing to keep in mind, too, again, is regents exams, since they switched to about 10 years ago, really were never intended to be out of 100 points.
That's correct.
So, what ended up happening is if you think about AP exams are scaled one to five, the intent of the new regents exams was to scale them from one to five. But, the pushback was that, well, we, schools use these as final exams, which the State Department has never endorsed. Like, they leave it to the local decision, but they've never endorsed using regents exams as final exams per se, even though more than half the schools in the state do it. So, they had to come up, so the, to say that when you convert it to a numerical measure, like a 65 on a regents exam does not mean you got 65% of the questions correct. It's just simply they took the scale one through five and they had to come up with numbers from zero to 100 that matched that. So, if you look at, so when people sort of talk about, well, gee, you only need 40% of the questions correct to pass a regents exam, I would encourage you to take a look at some other tests that are considered extremely rigorous, like the AP exams. For instance, in order to get a three in AP Calculus, you only need to get about 40% of the questions correct to get a three. To get a four, which is sort of comparable to being in college, you need about 50%. And to get a five, about 65 to 66%. So, if you were to say, I got 66% of the questions correct on a test, most people would not consider that to be like the most distinguished score. But, on an AP exam, it is. So, there's, there's a little bit of misinformation in terms of how things are scaled. The zero to 100 is really just so that schools are able to use them as final exam grades. In theory, all scores from 65 through 84, say, are equal. They're all a level three. Right? So, they then had to kind of just divvy it up so that you could make, but in, in reality, there's no difference between a 65, a 67, and a 69. They're all a level three. So, if that makes sense. So, but they have not changed that scale in about 10 years.
The 85 and above.
Right. And the 85 and above has always been rigorous. That was one of the complaints, was that, wait, it's super easy to pass these, but it's really hard to get 85 or above.
Right.
So, that was another where the rub was. Yeah.
Thank you.
Hi.
Other question?
Go ahead. Do you go first?
Thank you. I was just wondering, what type of response do we get on the student and parent climate surveys?
We get a great result from the students because we have them do them at school. Otherwise, we would be concerned more with the high school students that we maybe would not get the return. Generally, the parent survey responses, we do get a pretty good return. We tend to get a better return with elementary parents. So, we'll hopefully, maybe because it's, we haven't done it in a couple of years, maybe we'll get a higher percentage of parent responses this year, and we can try and encourage that a little bit more. And the staff, there's a staff climate survey as well, and we always get a pretty good response in most areas with them. They are anonymous, obviously. People can opt out of it, but we generally get a pretty high percentage back. Yep.
Thank you for putting the time and effort to put this together. That's a lot of information. I wanted to say that I think it's great that we're adjusting the curriculum based on targeting, like what's most important. I thought that was really a good opportunity for us. I have a couple of questions. Dave, I think this one's for you. So, it seems like now we're having a heavier reliance on the iReady since we moved the K, the three-through-eight exams out. Do we ever, do we calibrate that data that we're using with, like, the performance of the students in the classroom to make sure that it's on target if we're using it for this type of metrics?
So, and we also, we do try to correlate it with the state assessments, too. So, I don't want to say we're completely throwing them out, the state assessments. It's just that because it's somewhat unreliable, like for a student to student, it tends to be reliable. When you look at an entire cohort, it's not because so many kids don't take it. So, that's where that comes in. But, yes, we also look at classroom performance. We have students that also are tested using like F and P measures in reading. We correlate it with that. So, we try to correlate as many of the measures as possible because to rely on one single measure doesn't make a whole lot of sense, right? Because you really want to look at multiple measures to ensure that you're getting a clear picture. The reason we use that as our metric is because that's the one assessment that is nationally normed, and it's not subjective. Like, so, F and Ps are great, but it's somewhat subjective in that three different reading teachers could give the same student F and P and not necessarily come out with the same reading level. So, that's why we choose iReady, just because it is standardized, it's normed, and it's consistent.
And the iReady is really, and the metrics is a more broader base. Like, this year, we also have implemented the Sunday Reading Program. So, we're curious to see how does the iReady data align with some of that information as well. But, that's really looking at individual students or individual classrooms as to where the needs are.
So, on the 2026 revised goals, how did they compare to the goals up until this point? Did we decrease them? Did they stay steady? Did they increase?
The metrics? So, some of them, prior to, we were on target for meeting them. Some of them, we were not. And again, when we established the metrics, some of them, we didn't really have a good idea. We, you know, if you remember, for example, the graduation rate is still on there, and we have 100% as our goal because we felt strongly that our goal should be to have every student graduate from our district. So, some of them may be unrealistic. And when we set some of the metrics, we thought that they could be a stretch, but we felt that it was more important to try and stretch to get there. And if we didn't meet them, if we're making progress, that's a great measure, even if we're off-target. I think now, based on some of the initial data, we have a little bit better sense of the progress we can make than we did when we first established them.
So, this is really the only second time that we've reset the goals?
Yes.
Which makes sense to do it now after the last year and a half.
Right.
But, I was just wondering, I was assuming that maybe we were a little, we were not as realistic as we should have been in some of the goal setting and maybe?
So, in the targets that are set, we use, for most of the targets, there's sort of a target theory called halfway to 100. So, if your baseline is 50, right, your ultimate goal might be 100, but, you know, halfway to 100 is 75. So, that's where you set your goals, at 75.
Right.
So, you're using this halfway to 100 as sort of your, your standard measurement to shoot for, because over five years, that's typically something you can strive for. Whereas, in other areas, you don't want to do halfway to 100, like graduation rate. You want to get to 100. Like, getting halfway there is not good enough. So, that's kind of where we started with all, most of the measures was this halfway to 100 is how we computed it.
Right.
And then, the, I think this, I only have two questions left. We started out with 72, then it said we revised like 10, came down to 62. But, then after this year, we were down to 52.
Yep.
Do we have a list of the ones that we removed from there that you could share with us later?
Sure. I can send you the metrics that we had from last year. I can send you all three years if you wanted to see what the comparisons are. Some of the changes in the metrics, we made based on the school climate survey. So, we just changed the language to align with those questions. And some of them, after we established them, we realized we really didn't have a good way to collect data that was accurate. But, sure, I'm happy to share.
Yeah, I'm just curious of the changes.
Yeah, I can name.
Just for personal curiosity.
Probably 10 of them are to bet. So, some were the three-through-eight testing. There's four right there because you've got ELA math for, because we do it three through five and then six through eight. We also took, we had professional development in there for technology.
Right.
Which, we do so much tech, I don't even know what we were measuring anymore because it was just, it was how many hours, right? But, we do so many hours that it, it's just a, it's a necessary thing now. So, it's, when we developed that metric, it was kind of before we were so deep into technology.
Yeah.
And then, one of the other ones, I lost my train of thought. The professional development was one. And there was a couple, oh, there was a couple that we were already consistently at 100% each year, so it just seemed kind of silly.
Yeah. It makes sense not to have a metrics just to have one, you know, if it's not adding anything.
Yeah, so I can share the original, the modification and the new ones.
Okay.
Yep.
I'm not sure, I'm just curious about this. For in-school suspension at the middle school level and the target, what constitute, like, how is that measured? Is it, is in-school like just you do a certain offense, you're in a certain room with a teacher after school? Or, could that qualify as you're having lunch with the principal? Like, what?
No.
When do you hit the in-school versus just like a disciplinary action?
Right, so, in-school, one has to be coded as an in-school suspension, so it rises to a different level. Having, you know, lunch with the principal or after school would not be considered an in-school. In-school generally is you're removed from classes that day. So, it has to rise.
So, same as the high school model.
Right, so, it, yeah, so it has to rise to that level.
And I think that was all that I had.
Any other questions? Thank you so much for putting this all together.
Thank you.
Sure. Before we move on to item five, our public comment on agenda items, Brittany pointed out that I inadvertently skipped over our minutes of the vote, certifying the vote from yesterday. So, let's go back to that. And it's under item 2B. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the October 19th, 2021, Special Meeting, the Capital Project Vote. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Can we, can we see them? Or is there, is there, is there minutes or no?
It's, it's just the, it's the certifying the results. And, but, you might be able to pull them up.
And thank you to our community for supporting the Capital Bonfire.
I think there.
We'll show the minutes, but it doesn't say much.
It has the, there's like the tallying of the?
Do you have the spreadsheet? Is that what you want?
This is the?
There you go. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Going back to item five, our recognition of public comment on an agenda item. At this point, if we have anybody with us who would like to address the board on an agenda item, please come up to the microphone.
My name is Charmaine. Is it, as soon as this is on, correct? I can't, I can't hear, but.
Sorry.
My name is Charmaine. We just, I just want to comment on two things. I didn't realize this is Board Appreciation Night when I received the invitation from the superintendent to come and hear the report out about the committee. So, as a former board member, I have only the smallest idea of what you must be going through and have gone through for the last two years. So, I just want to extend my sincere gratitude for steering the district through very tumultuous and rapidly changing times. So, that's, I appreciate all of your efforts and time and energy that you gave. And I also just want to appreciate the district for forming the committee. It brought it all back when the superintendent started showing the slides. It was a very lively discussion. It was an extremely large committee with good representation of students, staff, faculty, and community members. And we spent quite a number of hours debating, discussing, and coming up with the recommendations. So, I applaud the district for that framework that they offered for input. And I trust that the plan has been in good hands and appreciate the district nipping and tucking as needed. I also believe that Joelle and Gardner went and did quite a bit of facilitation and organization of that committee, so I want to appreciate her also. So, and thank you for the invitation to come tonight to hear the update.
Seeing no one else, we'll move on to item six, action items. A, finance action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items, one through four.
Point of order?
Yes.
I'd like to isolate item number four so that I can vote on one through three. I must recuse myself from item number four.
Okay. I'll restate the recommendation. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items, one through three.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. And then, it is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following finance action item, number four.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. B, professional personnel action items. It is recommended by the superintendent. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items, one through 11.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. C, support personnel action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items, one through 16.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. D, other action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following action items, one through three.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Item seven, recognition of public comment on a non-agenda item. If we have anybody with us tonight who would like to address the board on a non-agenda item, please come to the microphone now. Item eight, future meetings and events. Our next regular board meeting is on Wednesday, November 3rd, anticipating executive session at 6:00 and the remainder of the meeting, open meeting at 7:00. There is a meeting on Wednesday, November 10th, at 6:00 PM of the District Equity and Inclusivity Committee. And then, our meeting after that on Wednesday, November 17th, which is like right before Thanksgiving, our regular board meeting at 7:00, but anticipating executive session starting at 6:00.
The six o'clock start time for the DEI committee on the 10th, correct?
Six.
Six? Okay.
Just before we take a motion to adjourn, before everybody leaves, I need a signature from all the board members on the document in this red folder. So, don't leave without doing that.
Take it with you.
Um, yeah, don't take it with you. And I'm not sure if we have a couple of PIG students with us, but I see a couple people out there. If you need to come up and get a signature afterwards, just come on up and see anybody. Seeing no need to go back into executive session, could we get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.